Okay, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order today being April 11th, 2016. This meeting is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris. The matters listed on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to start the meeting if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, could we also recognize-
Yes.
-Mr. Delay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak on that?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I did want to ask everybody, we had a gentleman, really just was an incredible figure for the city in so many respects, but one thing that was extremely important to him was education. He served on the school committee for five terms, excuse me, for ten years and really was instrumental in many of the projects and initiatives that we're all very proud of today. Mr. Ed Delay passed away at the age of eighty-four, I think all of us know him in some way, and you know, he's in a better place and he led quite a life and contributed greatly to the city in so many different ways. If we could, if we can just have another moment of silence in honor of Mr. Ed Delay. Great, thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay, we'll go to approval of minutes. We have some minutes from our March 22nd, 2016, regular school committee meeting. Further motion to approve by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Any comments or questions on those minutes? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Next item is approval of bills. We have two warrants. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3016 dated April 12th, 2016, in the amount of eight hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred dollars and twenty cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you, further motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Move for roll call vote for approval of warrant 3016.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3017 dated April 12th, 2016, in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand thirteen dollars eighty-three cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you, further motion by Mrs. Carpenter to approve warrant 3017, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote?
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Is that all right? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we can go to continued business. First item under continued business is the Massachusetts School Building Authority and Higgins Project. Mrs. Dunn, anything new to report?
Actually, nothing different from the last report, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting will be April 28th in the afternoon at Higgins and we're hoping to have a tour of the building. Folks will get an email detailing what time and you know, you have to wear protective footwear and hats will be given, hard hats will be given up, but that actually has not yet been confirmed and when it is, you will definitely hear about it. Otherwise, we will still be having our weekly, our monthly meeting that day and the meeting will take place at the Higgins in the, one of the former vocational classrooms which are being used by the contractors and we'll meet on site. But everything is proceeding as planned, they are working very hard. If you go over, you can see that more work has been done on the new driveway which will be put in for the new approach from the King Street area and that's the, that's the visible work. Inside, things have progressed to the point where they're really very, very close to having everything inside ready, so it's exciting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Excellent. We'll go on to item two, which is the homeschool policy. I assisted the superintendent with drafting a policy for review by the school committee and Dr. Levine, did you want to speak on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at your request, I reviewed five or six policies from surrounding area cities and towns. Most of them were relatively simple. I actually increased in somewhat complexity, the draft that I submitted to you and added some, I think, teeth to the policy draft that you have in front of you for your review.
Open it up to any committee members for any thoughts or comments. Mr. Hockman?
If there are none, I'd make a motion to file the recommendation of the mayor and the superintendent.
Further motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Any comments on the motion? Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. I will not be in favor of this motion. I know that we've had this discussion in the past and I know that this has been a topic for a few years and I know that some of the arguments for allowing homeschool students to participate in sports were it's only a couple of kids and I feel bad for the kids, I really do. I don't ever want to see a kid left out for any reason, but with that said, parents make the decisions for their children and we have a number of parents at the high school that chose PBD High. Right or wrong, good or bad, with all of its flaws, kids get on the bus early in the morning, stay after school, participate in sports, they keep their grades up, they're allowed to play, they don't keep their grades up, they're not allowed to play, kids get cut for their friends, you see kids upset and hurt by decisions that the coach makes, but that's a life decision. They chose whoever they chose, but it's a school sport, in my opinion. You have school pride. You know, right now, we have, and I know part of the argument, a few meetings back, a lot of meetings back now, was, well, they're PBD citizens and I agree, but we have a number of PBD citizens going to Fenwick and going to Saint John's and going to Malden Catholic and going to Saint Mary's and they're excelling as student athletes, as students in plays and they're representing their school, whatever school that they're playing on and I applaud them for that and I encourage them. To me, and this is my personal opinion, it's not a level playing field when you allow a homeschool student to compete against a PBD High student. It's not a level playing ground. It's completely different criteria that you're utilizing to evaluate that student. You might have one student, and even in this policy, it said a minimum of three hours of class time. Meanwhile, PBD High student was on a bus for up to forty-five minutes, could have had four tests. Now you're having them compete for the second base position for the high school baseball team and to me, it's an unfair playing field. It really is and I just don't think that that's a benefit to the students that we have that wanted to go to PBD High. During our presentation from the four schools that we had, the one number that kind of blew me away is how much enrollment we've had just in September in every single school. You have people coming to PBD in droves and I love that. You have us investing in education and I love that, you know. I want everybody to go to PBD High because my, I went there, my oldest daughter graduated from there, my youngest daughter's there now. You know, everybody says, I know one other argument was, oh, well, you know, it's not fair. Well, it may not be fair, but the parents are choosing not to send their kids there. That's their choice and it's okay, it's okay that they're not choosing to send their kids to PBD High. I look at high school sports, theater, you're representing your school, not your town, not your city, you're representing your school and you lose a sense of that, especially when you're talking about competing for positions. That really, I just, and I'm seeing it now. My oldest daughter, for those of you that don't know, I don't think has a competitive bone in her body. She was very much into theater and drama and so there wasn't cuts, it was everybody kind of got to participate. But you got graded on some of the things that she did, but anyway. But my youngest daughter, she is into sports and I'm watching her friends now get cut from sports that she loves for her friends. Now, you know, they're still friends, they still see each other on a daily basis, they can kind of pick themselves up. I just don't see it as a fair playground, a playing field, I really don't and that's why I'm not, I'm not going to be in favor of this. The other thing, just to touch on one other topic, I, when you're, when you open it up, you're asking for almost like an open campus type of atmosphere or a school à la carte and there are a number of things that I would love to change at the high school, but we can't because of our regulations, whether it's state regulations or federal mandates or MCAS slash park, which I would completely abolish, but that's, again, me. So to have a parent have the ability to pick and choose what they want to take out of our school system, I have a significant problem with. I can't, my daughter, like I said, is an athlete and she plays three sports. I can't opt her out of gym. Does it make sense that she's taking gym instead of an AP course? No, but that's the rules that we have to play by. That's the rule she has to play by and they're not our rules. Those are set forth by the state. Do I want that? No, I'd rather her take another course to better herself for college, but that's not, that's not what we can do and I just, I really kind of take offense in some ways that we're looking at allowing a parent to pick and choose what they like or don't like from our system and that to me is wrong because I can't do it and anybody here that has a high school student can't do it and I just don't see that as fair, so that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Mrs. Dunn then, Mrs. Carpenter? Oh, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. So this issue has been brought before some members of this board, a couple of, maybe a few times. I think I've been on the board for almost nine years now. When I first got on the board, this was an issue that was brought before subcommittee and it didn't go through at that time and at that time, my kids were really young and my first instinct was to say, sure, why not? Everybody can play, what's wrong with that? During that time, my kids were in the land of everybody gets a trophy. So now that I will consider myself much more seasoned in having children at the high school, it's not the same land. Not everybody gets a trophy in high school. It's very competitive. I see things in a different light now. What I'm afraid is that most people who do not have children at our high school do not see it that way. It is very competitive and you are taking something away possibly from our students who go through the day-to-day life of a high school student, which some people may not realize involves waking up at five o'clock in the morning, standing outside in the pitch black, in snow, riding a bus, spending all day in school, very stressful environment at times. Then when you're the athlete, you have practice four nights a week. You get home at five or six o'clock at night, you have dinner, take a shower and then you will have four hours of homework. You will watch your child go to bed at eleven, twelve o'clock at night and get up and do it all over again the next day. I don't see that as a level playing field for a homeschool student. I don't see the policy that has been written here making it level. What I do see is that homeschool parents have opted out of public education. Therefore, they've also opted out of certain privileges that accompany enrollment in public school systems. Homeschool students do not receive a PBD diploma. These are PBD sports, PBD schools, these are privileges. You don't get to play unless you follow the rules. This policy also talks about curricula, so this is including some of our classrooms which I assume will be some labs. I have a lot of questions about this policy. Is this going to include them to go to Essex Tech and pick out some shops they'd like to take? Can they go to the PBD Learning Academy? Will they be able to go to the community school? Will they be eligible for scholarships that our students are now eligible for because they participate in certain sports? A lot of our students will depend on those scholarships, play sports to try to help them afford college. They need them on their college applications as well. Are we going to have to make sure that we have enough Chromebooks for any homeschool students? There will be drama, there will be chorus. There are so many other issues that this policy will open up and cause for us that we are not, in my opinion, prepared to take on and I do not believe that it is fair. I would also like to make note that this particular topic, in my opinion, is not properly brought before us. I have heard from many people that this was very short notice. Some people have blamed certain members on this board of doing it on purpose and I will tell you that myself and other colleagues on this board did not put this on the agenda as short notice.
I put it on the agenda, it was my decision by myself-
That's correct.
...which I have the right to do.
No, no, no. It's being flipped the other way, that we, the people who oppose this, put this on last minute. I want it known that we did not-
I agree, Mrs. Carpenter, it was completely my decision.
So what I want some of the members on this board to realize, things look much different when your kids get older. It's very different. The sports, the academics are so different from when your children are in elementary school. And Mr. Olympia, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but something you said tonight struck me. When you were talking about the autism issue with the South School, the Carroll School, which one was it?
The Brown.
The Brown. You made a statement that as you got older, there were things you were not aware of and I just want to point out at the beginning of my statement, that is exactly what happened to me. As I got older, as my kids got older, my opinion changed on this and I just wanted to mention that to you. And I know that people are going to say that they're taxpayers and that they have every right. We're all taxpayers. We pay taxes for many programs that none of us, some of us, don't even qualify for, but you still pay for them. I would welcome any student who lives in PBD to come to our schools. You are not being discriminated against, we welcome you, but it is a package and I'm sorry, but that is the way I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Anybody else who would like to speak? Mr. Olympia?
So to Ms. Carpenter's point, that is correct, what I did say, but honestly, I have a hard time reconciling, you know, physical handicaps to athletics. I have a hard time reconciling that. Honestly, we're talking about children. One of the things that I think about when I sit here and I say to myself, what is best for the kids? What is best for the kids in the community? Now, I understand that we are the PBD school district, but the way I see it, and maybe I'm incorrect in feeling this way, is what is best for the community also. And I would never hold a parent's decision against a child and that's what I feel like, you know, the opposing view may be, is that because the parents choose to hold their kids out of public schools, let's, you know, we should then exclude these kids because it's not fair. I just don't see it that way and I feel like we have kids that live out of district, that live in other cities and towns, that aren't invested in the community in any way and that's okay? That's just, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Miko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About fifteen years ago, I decided to get into the profession as a teacher. It was two weeks after nine eleven and I made a point that I would always advocate for children. It's amazing over the last fifteen years, what you see when you're a classroom teacher. You see the resiliency of children through good and bad times, especially through bad times. Bad things happen, they get cut from a team, they move on, they do something else. I did that when I was in seventh grade. Got cut from my baseball team, it was heart-wrenching. I couldn't hit a curveball, so I picked up a basketball and I started shooting free throws and then layups. I made my high school team, I played college basketball. I was resilient, just like the students that I have every day, just like the kids that I have at home. I'm instilling resiliency in their lives because if they do have an issue or something doesn't go their way, they can move on. And yes, I agree, not everyone gets a trophy, but it's a learning experience and I agree with Mr. Olympia on this, I just can't keep a child accountable for, say, their parent's decision to homeschool. If that student wants to participate, I'm in favor of it. I'm going to be voting yes on this.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that my views on this topic are well-known and the reason for that is not in any way to criticize anyone who has chosen to homeschool their children. I respect the parents' rights to make that decision and I admire them because I think it's a really tough decision, but I also know when you make decisions that there are pros and cons for everything. My two colleagues have just spoken about resiliency and about teaching children, you know, that they can bounce back and about, you know, the difficulties of losing out to a classmate or fellow sportsman and also about, you know, taking care of all of the Where I come from on this issue is an issue of equity. We are trying to provide opportunities to students who will be subjected to do two different sets of rules. And Mr. Miko, when you lost out to someone who was on your team and was playing with you, that student had been subjected to the same rules in school that you were. They went through the same daily schedule, they had the same behavior rules, the discipline rules, attendance rules, all of those things. To me, that was equitable. Not everybody is going to win, but you at least had a level playing field. And right now, the way that I look at it and the way I look at this policy is you're trying to conduct a program where the participants will not be following the same rules. I have many issues with this policy and I will bring those up as I go through, but not just on sports, but on the classroom experience as well. This policy, excuse me, brings in the MIAA rules. Those apply to high school sports. This entire policy applies K to twelve. So there's an issue right there where we need work on the language of this policy. We have issues at the high school right now with scheduling and I know the homeschool representatives spoke about how they wanted their students to be able to take the AP classes. Right now, we have students who want to take AP classes, but because they have to take required courses, as Mr. Rosignol said, there are students who cannot take an AP class. But if they had control of their own school day, they'd be able to take that AP class. There wouldn't be any schedule conflict because they could come in and just take that one or two or three AP classes that they wanted and they wouldn't have to worry about taking the physical ed and wellness class or even the required English class. It might work out for them to take English at seven o'clock at night at home. And I think you're opening a door to a lot of problems and I think that the problems will expand if we do this with the coursework because right now, you will be giving people the option to come to school à la carte and it's a wonderful thought, but I don't see how it can be practically administered. In this policy, you state that the students will be subject to all regulations and requirements, including attendance and discipline. And I do have several questions and I'll put them out there. What happens when you have a student in school right now who does not follow the rules? They have to stay after school? They get a detention. We have a very strict social eligibility policy. If a student gets four detentions, they get a dean's detention. They can no longer participate in activities until they have served the dean's detention. That can keep a student out of activities for up to fifteen days, depending upon the timing. If a student earns their fourth demerit, and, excuse me, on a Friday, but they're not going to get a dean's detention until the following Friday, they cannot participate in any after-school activities until the following week after the dean's detention has been served. That applies to the students who are full-time students at PBD Veterans Memorial High School. My question is, and I will put it there- My question is, and I will put it there, you don't have to answer it right now, but I'll bring it up again. What happens to a homeschool student who arrives to the class that they're going to take, and they're late? What kind of discipline would they face? Can you make them stay after school? I was told no. Can you make them follow our social eligibility policy? I don't understand how you could. Bring up another point. It's the last paragraph about students who are members of athletic teams need to submit a letter on the day of a game stating that they have participated in educational activities for 3.5 hours that day. The actual MIAA requirement is that a student has to participate in a minimum of 3.5 hours per day. That includes practices. Are we going to require a letter every day to verify that a student has participated for 3.5 hours of education? We are not allowed to inquire into the day of a student who's being homeschooled. My understanding is, we are not allowed to question that. Someone may take math all day on Friday because they're involved in a great project, and that's wonderful. I mean, I wish we could do that in school, but we can't. That one full day is not a daily occurrence because the scheduling is fluid. We're not allowed to dictate how that schedule occurs. We're not allowed to inquire into it. Our student athletes have to produce proof of grades. The coaches all get a report. How will that operate? How are we going to do that? I don't understand how you can possibly mesh two totally different educational institutions and make a level playing field for our students. To me, the after-school activities, the sports, those are part and parcel with a public education. And no one can say, "I'm doing this out of spite or anything else." I have been consistent. I fight charter schools. I fight the constant erosion of public education. And to me, this is an example of further erosion where people are able to chip away and take what they want and not have to deal with what they don't want. But there are a lot of people who don't want to deal with it, but they do because they're willing to work hard, follow the rules, and at the end of the day, they do get to participate. If they don't follow the rules, they don't get to participate. So that's where I'm coming from philosophically and with the draft. I have a huge list of issues with this policy. And I'll be honest, one problem with the policy is, it didn't, it didn't come to us by virtue of our own methods. Normally, we would consult with all the people involved. Did anyone here speak with Mr. Sheridan on this? Okay. I did. I called him. Anybody speak with Mr. Buckley at the high school? Good. I did too. I called him. Anybody talk with Mr. Bucy? I called him. As far as this coming forward, Mr. Mayor, just so that the people who are criticizing school committee members, thinking that we did this on purpose, it actually put us at a disadvantage. We get our packet on a Friday night, we have a meeting on a Tuesday. This week, we're off on our schedule. Normally, I work on my agenda all weekend long, preparing for Tuesday night. So today, I spent the entire day researching and calling people to get their input on the issues that I see on the policy. And I can tell you, they have issues with this. Did anybody speak with Mr. Bedard at the Learning Academy? I did. And I did put in a call to an elementary school principal, but was unable to speak with that person, to get a flavor for what the actual impact is at each level. It is an impact. And yet, we have a policy with none of the people who have to deal with this for their I've spoken with teachers in the last few days and asked for their input. It's gonna be very difficult to administer this. If someone wants to attend a math class at the Higgins, that's a rotating schedule. If someone wants to use the labs at the Higgins, who will monitor the use? How do we allocate supplies? How do we allocate safety? The people who utilize our equipment have to be trained, and they are actually certified teachers. Are we going to allow uncertified teachers to be using our classrooms? And as you heard tonight, just from a small group of schools, there aren't many free classrooms. We're bursting at the seams. To have the onus on the principal at the very bottom of this, that everything will reflect back to the principal, that they have to deal with all, you know, any issues, any problems, that's putting a lot on the principal. We heard about what they're doing, how hard they're trying to work with our students to make this the best school system that we could possibly have. And I welcome everyone. You know, I want everybody to come to our schools. I've tried to survey people to find out, why don't they want to come to our schools? We're not allowed to ask. I ask people myself, but that's not a scientific study. This, honestly, I can see down the road that this opens a huge door to all kinds of problems that we may not be anticipating. Just think of what we go through at prom time. We have a regulation on who can go to the prom. We have to get verification from other schools to let another kid from another school system go to the prom. It's all because we have a big school district, we have specific rules and regulations that people need to follow. And if we keep chipping away with it, before you know it, why follow the rules? I'm just gonna get my own set of rules. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm hearing here is that this is such a bad idea. And I respectfully disagree, but if it's such a bad idea, we should be hearing all of this bad news. Let's face it, bad news travels faster than good news. In fifteen years of teaching, this issue hasn't come up. It's been a non-issue across this, I haven't seen it. I haven't, this is something, if this is so terrible, such a bad idea, this should show up on the front pages of every newspaper. Terrible idea. I'm not seeing it. And as for the playing field, over the years, as a player, as a former coach, some of my best players were always those that were challenged the most in school. Kids taking AP courses, going on to Harvard and BC and all these other great schools. I, as a student athlete, that was my challenge. I welcomed that. I wanted to be the best in the classroom, best on the field. I just don't buy the playing field argument and it not being a level playing field. The DESE is regulating what's going on in a homeschool environment. Same DESE that regulates what goes on in our schools. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Rosinkl?
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I want to touch on a couple of things that Mr. Miko had just mentioned, that this isn't an issue or that you haven't seen any, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, any problems with it. Nationally, this is a discussion being had everywhere there, and most of the time, homeschoolers are going through legislation because they're actually losing in the courts. And I'm just, but I'll go back to that in one second, and I'll just read the conclusion of an article I read from a homeschool website. But I want to just go and touch on a couple of other topics really quickly, and like I said, I'll try to be brief. Going to the administration that Ms. Dunn had pointed out, Mr. Buckley and Mr. Sheridan were both here and were not in favor of it. So I just want the new members to be aware, because that happened in, I want to say either October or November of last year. And they, to Ms. Dunn's point, had a difficult time trying to manage how they were gonna shuttle people in and out, if we're talking about curriculum versus athletics. And so they did have issues with it. I want to touch on something Ms. Coppers said early, and I want to emphasize this. Homeschool students do not receive a PBD High diploma. I know that that was widely speculated, that, well, they're PBD High students, so they should be able to attend PBD High school. That is inaccurate. Their diploma is set forth, as Mr. Miko said, from the DESE. It's not something that we have any control over. It's not a PBD High diploma. Something that Mr. Olympia had mentioned, you're there for the kids, and I absolutely 100% agree with you. And one of the points that you had made were, there are other students from other cities. And you know what? I love that because they're choosing PBD High. They're choosing us. They're choosing our curriculum and our sports and our coaches. In this instance, you have parents not wanting to send their kids to our schools, for whatever reason, whether it's religious, whether it's, I don't even care the reason, and that's their choice. And I would rather them go to our schools because I think they're great, but they choose not to. And instead, what they're trying to do, as Ms. Dunn had pointed out, they're trying to pick what they can't provide and supplement that. So it is school à la carte. So there was, there's a website called Homeschool World, the official website of Practical Homeschooling Magazine. And I'm just gonna read the conclusion really quickly. Do parents have the right to choose the amount of public education their children receive? Although the courts have said no, the state legislatures are beginning to say yes. The access trends is not without potential dangers. Access supporters must remember to guard the right of parents to remain free from extraneous governmental regulations when they receive no government services. Despite, and then it just keeps going on. The goal is school à la carte. That, that's the goal. And I know it may not be the goal from the parents that want their students to participate at PBD High, but that is the goal of the homeschool movement, is to find what they can't provide and supplement it with public education in an à la carte format. And if that's the direction that this board wants to go in, I'm all for it, because the first thing I'm doing is, I'm gonna write a policy to get rid of gym as a mandatory requirement so that my daughter can now take AP courses. I mean, if that's what we want to do, I don't have a problem with it, but just be aware that that should service all of our students. Let the parents decide on what courses that they want to attend. MCAS, no MCAS. Park, no park. No test at all. I mean, that's, that's the slippery slope I see us traveling down.
Thank you. Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for this tremendous debate that we're having tonight over what is a passionate issue for me, but I tend to agree with Mr. Miko, really a non-issue. Homeschool participation in not only sports, athletics, but in extracurricular activities and in classroom activities has been taking place in over 90% of the school districts in this state for a long, long time. And, and I don't see headlines, I don't see teachers' unions or superintendents or anybody, really, jumping up in arms about inequities or difficulties in working through policies. I do want to take a few minutes, and we've spent a lot of time on this, but there are some things said tonight that I just don't necessarily agree with, and I want to address. This interim superintendent, six weeks ago maybe, expressed vehement opposition to allowing a trip to the European continent, to Italy in particular, and he's told us that right in front of us on live camera at an open meeting, and this board elected to do what it is elected to do. Create policy, be a legislative body for the, for the PBD public schools. So there's certainly, that's just one example of, of policy that we've created, this body, this iteration of the school committee has created that has not pleased some administrators within the district. The lead administrator, I call him Moses at times for good reason, he does a great job, and he's a great superintendent. You don't get to play unless you follow the rules, and I keep hearing about the rules. And I, I don't, I, I just don't understand the argument, because the rules, as I see it, are to allow homeschool kids to play, to participate, and that's what the Supreme Judicial Court, the highest court in this state, ruled when they, when, when a homeschool family challenged the MIAA and their prohibition of allowing homeschool, a homeschool student to participate. Laws are created by legislatures, hopefully, and that's certainly my choice, but they're also created by courts and judges. I mean, that's how gay marriage became legal in the Commonwealth, was a judicial, a judicial decision from this same court, the Supreme Judicial Court. It created the law that permitted for gay marriage, while it also created a law that said that the MIAA cannot deny a homeschool student access to athletics. And in fact, the MIAA codified that in Rule 54, in which they say, and they list, there's a, a list of criteria in which was established after this court decision, which came out in the 90s. This isn't new. This is over, this is 20 years old. And in it, they leave the discretion initially up to the school committee, if there is the legislative body for the school district, and I, I don't have an exact figure, but I'm willing to guess, over 90% of the school districts within the state, in fact, did that. They said, "We will allow homeschool students to participate," and it allows us to, us as a legislative body, this school committee, to, to create criteria under which the homeschool students are to adhere to. And while I don't disagree with Ms. Dunn, that the policy that the superintendent and the mayor have put before us through their hard work, and I thank them for that, it probably needs to be tweaked a little bit. I think there needs to be some tightening up on, on some of the language, but I think I tend to do that with most policies that come before us, too. It's my, I guess, history here. The argument about allowing students that attend private school, whether it be within the city of PBD or outside of the city of PBD with students that are citizens or residents of PBD, belies the point. It's not our law. We didn't create the law. We're living by the law that was, that was handed down to us, just like we're living by the law that was handed down to us with regard to the regulations of the classes that PBD Veterans Memorial High School students are required to take.
PBD Veterans Memorial High School students.
Any student who goes to a public school is required to follow the law that was, or the policies that are created, and we are required to follow the law that was issued by the Supreme Judicial Court. I don't know how you can differentiate those two. I don't know how you can differentiate those two. So if you, if a member of this committee wishes to take up or takes umbrage with the policies of the DESE with regard to academic requirements, curriculum requirements, I welcome that. Let's take it up. But it's not an argument to defeat what the Supreme Judicial Court, the Supreme Judicial Court requires us to do with regard... With regard to attendance and discipline and academics, boy, we're making, we're making broad-stroke assumptions that, that these homeschool kids are, are running rampant, or not attending classes, or not learning, or that somehow their parent is incapable of saying, my child was, was in a learning environment for 3.5 hours today and every day. If that's the policy we wanna create, then let's say, show us attendance for 3.5 hours for every day. I tell you that homeschool kids that I know, homeschool families that I know, don't limit learning to 180 days. They don't limit learning to Monday to Friday. They don't limit learning for six hours a day. It happens as they're able to do it. I'm sure it happens for more than three and a half hours a day. And let's not forget, and the difference, and, and I thank Mr. Rosignol for, for going to the length that he has. I appreciate that, that he's gone to some websites and, and read some, some articles of a tremendous difference, and, and something that we need to remember around the country, is that not every state, not every state in this, in the United States requires superintendent of the local school district to approve the curriculum for a homeschool student. And, and that's by and large when homeschool students' challenges fail in courts. What we've, what we've elected to do, talk about picking and choosing an à la carte, what we've elected to do in this state through legislative action is require homeschool students' parents to submit curriculum to the school district. In this case, I believe it's Ms. Murtagh who, who oversees this. And we, as a state, have brought homeschool students into the school district. I, if, if we had to, if we had to, if we had the opportunity to ask all homeschool students in PBD whether or not they wanna be involved in the school district, I bet you most of them would say no. But we brought them in. They didn't bring us in. So if we wanna be in the field, I think it's appropriate to give them services. That's the rules that we operate under. We operate under the rules where their curriculum is required to be approved by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee, and they're also required, on an annual basis, to provide results of standardized testing to ensure that that curriculum is being met. That's the rules. In regard to a diploma, we have every opportunity under state law to provide these students with a PBD Veterans Memorial High School diploma. We do. It's, 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 it's an election for the school committee. And if we wanna take up that conversation at some point, I'm happy to bring that in the form of a motion, and we can put it into a subcommittee and discuss it. I, I, I just, the level playing field, and, and Mr. Rosignol and I, we've had many cups of coffee on this subject, and, and I respect his position on it, I absolutely do. We, we respectfully disagree, and, and I appreciate the passion from Ms. Dunn and Ms. Carpenter as well. But level playing fields, boy, where do we begin? I mean, I mean, is the, is the, is the child of a, of a mother who's addicted to narcotics during pregnancy, who's born testing positive for opiates, and is now a foster child that doesn't have resources to buy hockey equipment, is that child really gonna compete with a, with a, with a hockey player who's been playing since they're four or five years old, who's attending AAU programs because their parents have resources? I mean, let's not talk about a level playing field. I mean, I appreciate the argument, you know, the, the, about a, a baseball player, you know, who has a full day's activities and four tests, and, and has been standing on a bus stop. I, I mean, I appreciate it to a point, but to, to talk about level playing fields, I mean, if we looked at every kid at the varsity basketball at PBD High, both girls and boys, I don't know one that doesn't, hasn't played AAU basketball since they're about eight years old. And that's just not a level playing field. There, there are families within this district that can't afford that, and so I don't know that it's level. I, I think Ms. Dunn makes a terrific point as far as, you know, who, for labs, or, I, I don't think that, I don't envision parents of homeschool students are going to administer labs for these kids, or use our facilities in that regard. I envision that they'll be slotted as there are openings within labs and space, or, or things along those lines. But again, I think that that's probably part of the policy conversation that still needs to continue. I, I don't mean to go on and on. I think that the votes are decided on this. I think there's a clear line, and everyone's expressed those votes today, and I, I thank them for that. I, I respect that. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this forward. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for working with the mayor on the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol.
Thank you. I'll be brief. One thing I agree with you. This is basically a non-issue. It really is. And that's why you don't hear all of this going on in Revere or in, in other communities, because ultimately, you end up talking about a handful of kids taking the position of another handful of kids, if it's a competitive situation. So you're right. This is really a non-issue. But to me, it's the principle. And, and that's, that's where, where we disagree. You know, Jared and I, I'm sorry, Mr. Huckman and I. And, and that's where, you know, I'm obviously in disagreement with, with other board members. I did find it comical that, through the chair, that Mr. Huckman was referencing the DSE as being in favor of something that they've ruled in, because most of the time, they usually get it wrong when they're ruling on things. So ultimately, we were only talking about a handful of students when you're talking about doing athletics. But the kids that do end up getting hurt are the ones that get cut in favor of a homeschool student. And, and in the grand scheme of things, people have to learn what disappoint, learn through disappointment. Sometimes you have to be able to pick yourself up, and, and how you react to adversity ultimately is what makes your character. So I see where the votes are going, but I just wanted to make those few points.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to provide some information for everyone here. Rule 54 from the MIAA handbook states, "A home-educated student is eligible to participate in interclassical athletics if the following conditions are met. First, the local school committee of an MIAA public school member institution has adopted a policy regarding participation of home-educated students on the high school teams. And the local building principal has indicated such on the annual MIAA membership form while including all homeschoolers in the MIAA enrollment report. We are not mandated by any case law to allow this. It is permissible." And it states that right in Rule 54 FOA. So I don't think anyone needs to be told that we are mandated to allow this. We are not, as a school committee, we do have the ability to vote either yes or no. And that is clearly stated. Furthermore, we as a board cannot award diplomas to homeschool students. That is not subject to our rules, and we are not allowed to make a policy on that. There is a law which requires that the only people who are allowed to receive a diploma from a public school in Massachusetts must pass the MCAS exam. We can't even award diplomas to our students who don't pass that exam. They receive a certificate of attainment. That is the law. We cannot change that on this board. It is not permissible. And I don't want anyone thinking that that is possible. In order to make that possible, they need to advocate at the state level, not here. There is no possibility of receiving a Massachusetts school diploma from the PBD Public Schools unless you are enrolled. Which brings me to another question. When our students receive grades, they have to be enrolled, and we have to put in all kinds of data. They receive a student number. How will we handle that for homeschool students if we do allow them to participate in curricular activities? Do the homeschool parents realize they need to register their student, and that their student's information will be included in all of the data which is now available to the state? We have a lot of people in our own district who are very concerned about that data. That's something that's not being explained to people. People don't just show up and attend school in the school system. You have to be registered, you have to get a student number, and you have to be a part of the system. And I hope that that is stressed if people are wondering what happens when they come to school, because it's intrusive. It is intrusive, and it will be required. I also wanna ask whether the students who come for curricular activities will then be given a report card. How would that be handled? If I could.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. So, hello, everybody. Nice job. This is democracy in action, and it's never been clean, so good job, everybody. And Mrs. Dunn asks a whole bunch of great questions. If you could just pop yours, thanks. So there are a couple of things I wanna clarify. And if I don't answer your question directly, remind me. I couldn't hit a curveball either, I couldn't hit a fastball, but I could throw one.
Catch it.
So, no wonder why you got cut. I, I wrote this policy, and I've, I've had this conversation with the mayor, and he knows what I'm gonna say, I'm not in favor of it. Yeah, I wrote this policy because I was requested to do so. I think it's the right policy, and the reason I think it's the right policy is because policies are supposed to be generic. They're not supposed to be specific. A lot of the questions that Mrs. Dunn asked that need to be answered would be answered in procedure. So if the school committee passes the policy, the high school principal, the athletic director, myself, Mrs. Murtagh, other representatives of each grade level would sit and, and create procedures and answer the questions, a lot of which Mrs. Dunn has already asked. Some of which may have to be answered by legal counsel, quite frankly, because this is new and breaking ground. I haven't done well at this table this year. I hope the Red Sox do better. You know, I'm, I'm almost over, but that's okay. The question that you just asked, Mrs. Dunn, these are unenrolled students. I do not believe that they would even be allowed to get a student number, even if they came for a, a curricular activity. They would not get a grade through a report card. They may get a grade that would be sent to the instructional leader of the homeschool for progress, but, and, and be given credit through that vehicle, which would come back to Mrs. Murtagh. But they could not receive a student number, they could not register, they are considered unenrolled students by the state of Massachusetts. So they could never be part of the school system academically. So there would be no grade, there would be no report card that would be reported to the state, there would be no data. And you're absolutely right, they would not take the MCAS, they would not be part of the MCAS system, they could not receive a diploma. So that I know. The, many of the other questions that you asked that are legitimate would go through a procedure process after, if the school committee decides to pass the policy, we would then, that all those procedure, procedural questions would then kick in. I would assume that this policy would be passed to begin in the, in a certain deadline that would give us a few months to make those procedures a reality. We would need some time to do that. So I, I would think that football would be the next athletic activity that would begin in the summer. We would have to have something in place by that activity.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. Looking at this policy, the way it's currently drafted touches on three basic areas of concentration: athletics, after-school activities, and curriculum. I've already stated my position, I'm not in favor of any one of these. So with that said, I don't know how all of the board members feel. I'm wondering is, if people have, and Mr. Huckman and Mr. Amico and Ms. Dunn have all mentioned that they have issues with the current policy as written, I'm wondering if we should break them up into the three categories: after-school activities, sports, and curriculum, and then tailor our policy to what we think we're, we want to allow a homeschool student to participate in. And I'll leave that up for, I'll throw that out for discussion, because athletics is an after-school activity not tied to grades. Curriculum is tied to grades, and so are extracurricular activities such as band, chorus, drama. They're tied to grades at the high school. So this goes to the four members that I'm seeing voting for this, more or less. Do we want to break up the policy and vote on, do we wanna submit a policy for athletics, and we vote that up and down? A policy on curriculum, vote that up and down? Vote a policy on extracurricular activity, vote that up and down? So that way, we have a little bit more of a guideline to go by when we set the policy. I'll leave that open for discussion.
If there's no objections, I, I wanna say some words. Looks like I'm gonna be the tiebreaker, and I think everybody knows my position. It's been consistent from the first time that I was mayor, we discussed this topic. Good points have been made, but really, when I look at it, it comes down to exclusion and trying to make a way, trying to make it work for, for kids that are residents of PBD to be a part of things, and to be included in all that takes place here in our city. And to me, it goes much more beyond sports. I mean, a lot of the discussion has been on sports, and as, as everybody knows, I'm a sports person, that's how I grew up. But to me, it's more about being involved in drama or chorus if, if kids want to, or, or being in the chess club, or, or whatever club it would be. You know, taking advantage of those opportunities to be social, to be, to learn teamwork, and to learn the ups and downs of, of being a part of a group, and, and the successes and failures of being a part of a group individually and as a team. And to me, that's what it's all about, and those lessons are invaluable. And one thing I know in terms of rules and guidelines, I do know some of the families that homeschool their children here. I respect that decision. And I know that there are very strict guidelines that they put their children under, and it's intense. And I don't think that they're gonna let their children get by without full efforts and without full attention to their schooling before they're allowed to do any extracurricular activities. I, I feel very confident in saying that. I look at other communities to see what other communities do, and not that, that other communities are always right. And I'm fine with PBD standing alone on certain issues, certainly, or, or certain positions. But I look around at our, the cities and towns in our area. Beverly, they allow it. Danvers, they allow it. Salem, they allow it. Masscanomit, they allow it. Swampscott, they allow it. Marblehead, they allow it. Gloucester, they allow it. And the two cities and towns that I always look at, always, whenever there's a topic of concern, or I'm doing my investigation, or I'm studying, is I look at Andover and I look at Newton, and they both allow it. So again, that doesn't mean that they're right and, and we're wrong, but it goes a long way to me saying that this can work. We're very lucky in the city to have talented people. We have an outstanding high school principal, we have an outstanding athletic director, very talented group that we hear, have here in, as school administrators, here in the school committee. I don't think we need to micromanage. Let them do their work, just like they work it out in every other city and town. We create the policy and then allow it to, as Dr. Levine said, the procedures to work themselves out. Let the talented people that we hire that work for us every day work out the logistics on how it's gonna go. I just don't think, you know, I think we need to keep it simple, just like other cities and towns have, and let our people do their work and, and try to make it work for everybody. But at the end of the day, it's, to me, it's about being inclusive, having our kids that, and, you know, I don't wanna get into the taxpayer argument, but having our kids that are PBD kids be a part of the system in some way. And to me, that's how I come down, and, and I'll be voting that way. I'll be voting that way. And as to, you know, Mr. Rosignol, I understand that's where you're going with that, but I don't think we need to micromanage or make decisions and separate them that way. I'd just rather do it in one fell swoop, and then let, as I said, let the towns of people that we hire to run our school system work out the particulars. On that, Mr. Rosignol?
Through the chair, to the chair. All of those cities and towns that you mentioned, you're absolutely right, they allow homeschool students to participate, but in varying degrees. And that leads to my initial point was, is do we want to quantify what we want that to be allowed? Because there are some that only allow non-competitive athletics, there are some that allow everything, just like this policy is written. There are others that say after-school curriculum and athletics, but no curriculum-based. So although I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that every community you mentioned does allow homeschooling, the degree of homeschooling that they allow is varying.
Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I've said about a year ago that I would consider this if we could see some policy brought before us that would show that it was fair and equitable. At that time, the vote was held back because that's what was going to be brought before us. I've always said, if you can show me policy that makes it fair across the board for all of the kids, I would be in favor of it. That policy was supposed to be brought before us some time ago. I feel that at that time, it was pushed off. It was supposed to be brought forward in December. I feel that now, there is this policy that's before us, that's before us because there's a more favorable committee. I think that was done on purpose. As far as I'm concerned, this policy basically says, let's just figure it out as we go. Our main job as school committee members is to write policy. Never have we written policy and said, let's figure it out as we go. The whole reason why we put it off was because we were going to have policy before us that explained how it would be fair. That has not happened, so I will not be in favor of any of it, but I could have possibly been in favor of it had we broken it down and showed exactly how it was fair.
Thank you. And to that point, I do want to say, if it had been voted on in December and the vote went as according to how you think it would have went, there was nothing that would preclude the school committee as presently constituted to go ahead and make the motion again and vote how they want to. So even if we did go forward and have a vote in December and it was voted down, this school committee as a whole, and I'm sure would have, would have come forward and voted differently if they wanted to. So, you know, when it was brought forward, really doesn't matter. What matters is how the committee is constituted now and the feelings of the committee members. And, you know, that's, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. We have a policy in front of us. Again, that's just my opinion. Everybody can discuss it as they wish. You know, my feeling is procedures worked out by those that we hire. Mrs. Dunn?
Mr. Chairman, there is one thing that I would like to bring forward, and it's based on your inclusivity discussion. If we really, truly wanted to include all the children in PBD, we would open this to all of the students of PBD, no matter where they went to school. We would be including the students who attend charter schools, and we would attend, we would also allow students who attend parochial and private schools to participate in these activities. This does not promote total inclusivity of all of the students in PBD. It merely reaches out and allows people who have chosen to school their children at home to participate. It's a small group, but please do not tell us that every child in PBD is going to be included. That is not true, unless we make a vote to open it to everyone.
I respectfully just couldn't disagree more, Mrs. Dunn. Any other comments, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, just briefly. I think the MIAA prohibits us from allowing students that attend parochial schools from playing for PBD Veterans Memorial High School, so I don't know that we can violate the MIAA rules. With regard to policies that were, Mrs. Carpenter's point about policies that have been voted on by this body before, we've seen them written. Just in recent memory, the EpiPens. We voted to buy EpiPen cabinets and vote to have EpiPens in schools well before, I think nine months before a policy was ever put before us, and we did so because it was the right thing to do. You brought up a great, a great point and a terrific motion in which we should, we should have, and we did, vote to instruct the superintendent, the then superintendent, to purchase EpiPen cabinets and to purchase EpiPens so that we can have them in place once a policy was established. So we, and that's just one example coming right off the top of my head. So I, again, thank the board for the tremendous debate. I agree with Dr. Levine, democracy in action, and thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion on the floor that was made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. No.
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 Yes.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda, if there's no objection, I'd like to go out of order. Oh, sorry.
Why don't we do public participation first, and then we'll go to the
Alright, so we'll go forward now to the next item, which is public participation. Is anyone in the audience I would like to come forward and speak on a topic? The microphone is open. Yep, come on up, Sarah. If you could please introduce yourself.
Hi, some of you know me, some of you don't. My name is Sarah Dunn. I'm a product of the PBD school system as of last year. Actually, it hasn't even been a full year, so I'm fresh out of the system. So, memory serves, I am the only person who graduated last year, and I am the most recent to be in the school system, so I think I have a very unique perspective on this issue at hand. During my time at PBD High School, I was a four-year athlete. I was on swim team. I ran track for one year, didn't work out. I too cannot perform in some sports. I did drama for four years, and I think almost everybody here has actually come to a show, so thanks for supporting. I was class president for four years, I served on student advisory board for four years, student council for four years, student helping committee for four years, and various other groups, chorus, band, honors choir. And I think my first question for the committee, there was a lot of talk of, did we, you know, contact certain channels? And I would actually like to know if any of the student groups were contacted. I think that's a really important line to tap into, because these are the students who are being directly affected by your decision, and with all due respect, you guys aren't in high school. This doesn't affect you. A lot of your children are not in high school. I think only one of the committee members' children are currently in high school, so this does not affect you right now. I can only speak on high school because that's my most recent line of education, other than college, and that's not really in the mix right now. I think that it would have been very prudent, there are different groups to consult. As I stated, I was in student advisory board. They come to your meetings. I think that would have been very important to bring it up and just say, hey, what do you think? What do you think the climate, how would the climate change at school if we implemented this? What do you think? Because that's your direct line to the students, and I think it was very foolish not to utilize that. There's also the captains council, a council made up of our student leaders, who were elected to that position, who were appointed, who ran for that position through their coaches, because day in and day out, they went to practice, they went to school. They're all academically eligible to hold those positions. They're held to a very high academic standard. There's also the performing arts officers. There are officers for corral, which is the honors choir, officers for band, officers for the drama club, all appointed, all in academic standing, all to the standard of PBD High School. It's drawn across the board, whether it be sports. I know you'd spoken about splitting it into three groups of curriculars, sports, and then extracurricular clubs, but you, I don't think you could do that, because we're all held to the same standard regardless of club, extracurricular, or curricular activities. It's flat across the board. You want to have children involved, and I totally understand that. I, as I stated, I was very involved in high school. I took every opportunity to get involved. I wanted to be able to do whatever I wanted to, whatever was offered, I was there in a heartbeat. However, none of you have mentioned the alternative options to being participants in sport activities. We have PBA, we have the Little League program, PBD West, pretty popular, pretty popular name, I know we have some coaches, different sports here. We have the Raiders Football League. We have soft pitch, ah, sorry, fast pitch and slow pitch softball offered. We also have recreation summer theater through the PBD rec program, and I think instead of adding more people to our school systems programs, our PBD high school programs, why not grow our rec programs? Implement those ideas, grow them, and then maybe you'll get more students to come to our school system, because they'll meet other kids and cross, I don't want to say cross culture, but they'll get to meet other kids who are in the school program. Maybe their parents would want to send them there, maybe they won't, that's up to them. It's up to them, just the bottom line. There's also a classroom shortage, which I noticed while I was in high school. I had several classes in D House, or as many of you know them, as the portables. Those were never meant to be a permanent structure, however, they've made a nice home in the parking lot of PBD High School. And currently, there are teachers who don't even have a classroom who roam around. I had different classes in high school where we wouldn't even be in the same classroom every day because it wasn't available, and these were teachers who were there for a year or two, and they didn't have anywhere to go. Mrs. Metropolis, who was here earlier, if you were here for her presentation, and the other principals from the elementary schools, a common recurrence in their presentations was, there isn't enough room, there isn't the space available. It just doesn't make any sense. The other question I have is, as class president, I understood a lot of different policies for running events and fundraisers, and we were forced to pay a utilities fee if we wanted to utilize the school function rooms, like the auditorium, the cafeteria, if we wanted to hold a dance. Will we have those utility fees for outside groups coming in and using them? Because I know if, for example, if a dance group wanted to use our auditorium for, I want to say fesh, because I did Irish step dance, but a dancing, what am I trying to say? Recital, thank you. Would they also pay the utilities fee, or are we just going to abolish that? Because it needs to be across the board, there needs to be some standard. The AP courses that are offered, I'd like to share with you a brief story, real brief. So my junior year, I'm sorry, my freshman and sophomore year, I was involved in band and chorus. I did both of them. My junior year, I said, okay, you know, it's time to buckle down, I love doing that, but I need to take AP courses. And the courses that were offered conflicted with my schedule, and I was unable to do one of the most important things in my life, which was sing. And some of you have been to concerts, like I said, performances, so you've probably seen me. It's very important to me, and it's a stress reliever, and it was a reward for going to school for six hours a day. That was my reward, participating in that, that activity, to make PBD proud. I bleed blue and white, and that was important to me. And because of my AP schedule, I had to take a year off from something that I loved, but that was a sacrifice I made. Like everyone here has made a decision in their life, we all make choices and you need to stick by them. I didn't get to pick and choose which courses I wanted to enroll in. I had to make a choice and say, okay, academically, I need to sacrifice my passion for my academics, and it paid off, but I stick by my choice. Do I wish I could have done it? Yes, absolutely. I would have loved to be in corral a year earlier. I had to wait till my senior year, I had to beg every day. My choral director made a point at our banquet to say how determined I was and how impressed he was, and I went to his classroom every day after school to say, I'm interested in doing this. I'm sorry I had to leave for a year, but I'm interested in doing this, this was academics. And that paid off, because I stood up for myself, and if that's what's necessary, then that's what needs to be done. My next question is that, I understand in this draft that there, students will be required to pay all and any fees associated with the activity that they're participating in, in order to kind of level the playing field, in that sense. You know, there's debate about that. But I just want to express that the fee that's paid to do these activities is not just monetary. It's not just about money. The fee is the day-to-day activities that you have to deal with. I know many people here might know, many might not, if you've had a student recently in the school system, you might understand that we really do have a broken school system. I'm sorry if that comes as a shock, but we do. There are a lot of fundamental problems within the school system, where even if you did consult those student groups, as a student leader, a prior student leader in high school, I would have been afraid to speak up, to say what was on my mind, because there is an intimidation factor of being in high school. High school is very scary, because you don't have as much responsibility as you do outside of high school. You are treated like a child. There are people who control your day-to-day schedule, your day-to-day life, that have no relation to you, and they don't care how you feel about it. So are we going to get rid of two-hour detentions? Because that would be great. That would be awesome. Are we going to get rid of all of the disciplinary policies and just allow everyone's parents to discipline them? I would be okay with that, as long as that's something that's going to be changed, as long as that's flat across the board, what the decision will be. Another policy is the attendance policy, and I don't know if this is a fact-check thing, but I think we get a grant for our attendance policy, which is why it's so strict. So will that be affected? Why have the attendance policy? If you're absent 16 times in a year, 16 times, if you get mono, you're done. That's it. You use all of them up. 16 times, and you cannot move on to the next grade. I know, because I was constantly getting sinus infections and in constant fear of not being able to move on to the next grade because I was sick, because it was something that I couldn't help, but it was our policy. And so I had to adhere to that. I went to school when I was sick. I was the kid who got other people sick because I kept going. Another thing I'd like to talk about is on swim team, my team proudly, every year, earned the highest GPA award. We had the highest cumulative GPA of all winter sports, year after year. Get a certificate and everything. Will that be affected? How do we regulate GPA? Is it all on a 4.0 scale? Because that's what we go by. I don't know if DSE goes by a 4.0 scale, but will that be taken away? Because that's one of my proudest awards from swimming. Not even the first-place awards, not my Taurigean Award, not my Spirit Award, my GPA award, because academics are so heavily, they're just so heavily valued in PBD. We have student athletes, and that's regulated through the PBD school system. Our schools, our teachers, we are the product of them, and we represent all of the teachers. We represent the administration, whether we like it or not, and we represent our education system. When we go to these different cities, we represent PBD High School, not just PBD, though we do represent our city well. We represent the high school. I think that making a decision at this time is not an ideal choice. I think that there's not enough information. I think that in order to make an informed decision, in order to make a smart decision, you need to think about changing the attendance policies, changing our disciplinary action policies. All of these need to be changed in order for this to work, because otherwise, it is not fair. There is no level playing field. I know it was talked about, it was debated about, but there's no way to say what is a level playing field and what isn't. That's very gray, but I can tell you, that is not a level playing field. When you fear getting a two-hour detention because you look at someone the wrong way in high school, and you fear not being able to go to your meet, and you almost get in a car accident for getting to school on time, so you can attend your meet that day? That's a problem. That's a serious problem. There are more serious problems to talk about within the school system before you add other people from an outside environment, and you're doing disservice to them. We have our own in-house problems that need to be fixed, and if that means going down to the schools yourselves as a committee, and speaking with the administration, and speaking with the teachers, and saying, what's going on? I know there's a consultant there. I was contacted as a graduate. It needs to be done. So until those changes are, changes are admitted in the handbook, and I know you have to approve the handbook year after year, I don't think that it would be a very informed decision on the committee's part, until you speak with the appropriate channel, such as the student groups, and say, how will this affect your day-to-day life? Because this does not affect you. You don't have to go into school every day and wonder, will I get cut from my team? Maybe you have to worry about your kids getting cut from a team, but you don't have that pressure. To a high schooler, that's so important. That's our reward for sitting in school for six hours, for suffering through that. I would give anything to have not have had to go to school, to have been taught from my parents. That would be incredible. I would love that. But I went through it because I knew that I would have a reward at the end of that, and that was participating in my high school clubs, my high school extracurriculars, and my APs. And I take a lot of pride in that, and I have a lot of pride in PBD, but to be quite honest, if this goes through, that, and I have a lot of pride in PBD. But to be quite honest, if this goes through, I won't have pride in PBD. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Anybody else who would like to come forward and, and speak? The microphone is open. Okay. Welcome. If you could just please introduce yourself.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Nicole DiOrio. I'm a third-year biochem major at Suffolk University, graduated from PBD High in 2013. And please try to bear with me, I've never spoken in this type of form before. So I, I do want to point out that those against and in favor of the policy brought up some excellent points. The bottom line is that our lives are an aggregation of the choices that we make, such as your decision to send your child to a certain school, or for a student to participate in a certain activity. So I do firmly believe that school is not an à la carte experience. I was very involved in high school. I'm a huge supporter of providing an inclusive environment that every student can enjoy. But I would urge you to consider how the high school can maintain an inclusive environment as it stands right now. We do live in a society where the playing field is, is not level, and we can improve upon that in some ways. And in other ways, we will, we definitely have a lot more work to do. But we're dealing with an environment that is so heavily charged with diversity and emotion and differences between students. And sometimes, in the name of educational requirements and academics, these things tend to be placed on the back burner. And I think if we're going to allow more students to enter into the public school system, even for extracurriculars, we would need to think about how we can be more inclusive and how we can be more, um, be more considerate of diversity. And I, I will point out, I will agree with Sarah, that our facilities are extremely overburdened. I had teachers that did not have classrooms. I had classrooms where teachers moved around every year. So I will say that this is something that should not be voted on until we know a little bit more about where the school stands in terms of what the students would think about this policy and how this would affect the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak? The microphone is open. Introduce yourself, yep.
I'm Karen Harrington. I was not planning on speaking. It was very short notice that I heard about this, but after listening, there are a few things I'd like to say. I have a background in education. I have four kids. They all graduated from different types of, um, schools. Um, one from a public charter school, uh, one from Bishop Fenwick, one was homeschooled after trying the school system, Essex Aggie, and, um, one from St. Mary's. So variety of things, very big background. Couple of points to keep in mind, the, when I chose to homeschool, it is regulated by the state that we have to report to the school committee. So right there, you become a, a micro school of this, of PBD, because otherwise I wouldn't have needed to respond every year and fill out the paperwork. So I'm my own principal and set my own policies, and they are approved by, I believe at the time it was a superintendent. Some questions you had about loving, level playing fields, they're never going to be leveled. Jared had a good point about that. But I also want to point out that, um, I'm not sure if you're all aware of a school called Mass Academy for Math and Science. It is a magnet school in Worcester. Anyone from, from the state can go there. Now, it's not going to work perfectly, but if you go there, you are allowed to participate in your home, or you're sending schools' sports. Now, I had one child go there to Worcester, an hour and 10-minute commute. Obviously, he is not going to be able to participate here in PBD because he won't make it back in time. But the kids that lived closer were allowed to participate. They worked out something. So I feel like you should be able to work out some policy that allows, we're not talking about a lot of kids, you might not get any. But if all these other school systems can work something out, and PBD takes pride in their school system, I think you should be able to work something out to help these kids. Um, we're not talking about a lot of kids. And as far as taking a position from someone else, if they were that good, if they came to the school system, they would have made that the team anyway. And for things like swim team, um, my son that went to Essex Aggie, the swim coach saw him swim. Essex Aggie doesn't have a swim team, but because he went to Essex Aggie, he could not participate, even though both PBD and Danvers's coaches wanted him to swim for their teams, because that's policy. So you don't need to worry about the kids that are going to the other schools. They aren't allowed to. It's a policy. So that's all I think, um, I'd like to say. But I just, I, I jotted down notes. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open. Okay, thank you for those who came forward. We'll go back to the agenda. Actually, now, if there's no objection, I'd like to go to item eight, four, and turn it over to Mr. Rosengold for a report on the Athletics and Wellness Subcommittee.
No objection.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in early January, we had Mrs. Kilcoyne come before us, and she gave a fantastic presentation of all of the great work that she is doing up at the high school for the Student-Based Health Center. One of the topics that she had discussed, um, not only was mental health one of her main topics, but also condom distribution and reproductive health at the high school. And she made the recommendation then that she would like the ability to distribute condoms at the high school. Uh, we tabled that. We put that in the Wellness Subcommittee. We had a Wellness Subcommittee meeting back on February 27th. In attendance was Ms. Kopnder and I. But since then, I've also had conversations with Dr. Levine, our, um, Health Department, um, person, Sharon Cameron, as well as attended a Student-Based Health Center forum where the topic was broached then. And I am 100% in favor of this. Currently, in the state of Massachusetts, sexually transmitted diseases are on the rise. And now, although PBD's numbers, and pregnancy, now, PBD's numbers are not above the state average, they're actually below. But Ms. Kilcoyne has seen kids in her clinic that she's had to treat for sexually transmitted diseases. And in my opinion, they could have been avoided with condom distribution. As the mayor mentioned earlier on the last topic regarding homeschooling, this isn't an original idea. There are a number of communities currently already distributing condoms at the high, at their high school and their student-based health centers. Some of those cities and towns are Boston, Lynn, Salem, Rockport, Charlestown, Provincetown, Lexington, Lowell, and Holyoke. Now, um, one thing that you may be thinking is, oh, there's just going to be a bowl of condoms sitting at the, um, Health Center's administration desk. And that couldn't be further from the truth. What would have to happen in these instances is they would have to meet with Ms. Kilcoyne or a member of her staff, go over the best route, which is obviously abstinence. But if they're going to partake in a sexual activity, making it as healthy as possible, and they would go through counseling and education prior to just distribution. Um, I want to do this before it becomes an issue. If you remember, probably, I don't know, eight, 10 years ago up in Rockport, it seemed like every other day there was a student getting pregnant, and they were behind the curve. I don't want to be that type of statistic. I want to be ahead of the curve. I want to keep our kids as healthy and as safe as possible in our district. Um, just one last thing. Statistically, by having this available does not change the statistics of the children at the high school having sexual relations. If you're a student and you, and you're a parent of a student, and they're abstaining, which I have a high school student, that's what I am preaching to my daughter, um, that statistic doesn't change. What this will do is this will protect our most vulnerable students at the high school. And they're the ones that need the most protection, to be perfectly honest with you. So I'm going to make a motion coming out of the Wellness Committee meeting, that we allow the Student-Based Health Center to administer condoms, um, per their purview. So moved.
Second.
And I'm sorry, just as one last footnote, Ms. Kilcoyne is here. If there are any specific questions that I'm sure that she'd be answer, be able to answer well better than I.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rosengold, for bringing this forward. And, and nice to have you here, Allison. You're doing a great job for us, as we talked about before. It's nice to have you here. Seconded by Mr. Amico for discussion, Mr. Olympio.
Yeah, Mr. Rosengold, uh, parents' involvement in this decision, or?
Yes. Parents have to, in order to be seen at the clinic, yes, please. In order to be seen at the clinic, the way it stands now is, is you have to fill out an initial form.
So I'll clarify.
Yes.
So, um, we try to get parental permission forms signed for all children, all students that use the School-Based Health Center for purposes. There's an exception. The state of Massachusetts does have a mature minor law, and when children, no matter their age in the, the state of Massachusetts, are looking for information around, um, family planning, pregnancy testing, sexually transmitted infections, and substance abuse counseling specifically, they can consent themselves to that, to those services if they are deemed by the provider to be mature. So that, we follow all of the Massachusetts state regulations in my clinic. But the one piece that's carved out of that is condom distribution, which is made to go to school committees for, for that decision. So everything I do, we're fully licensed. I'm a licensed provider. I follow the state mandates. We, we, I always want to get parental permission, but if we mandate parental permission for certain things, we're going to have kids forego care because they're too afraid. And what we want to do is increase access. And that's what it's all about, is kids get, having the ability to have access to things that they wouldn't normally have. So they have someone to talk to, that they get the right information, um, because it's really difficult conversations to have. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Dunn?
I'm here. I'll stay until dismissed.
Stay right there. Do you have a comparable, um, excuse me, comparable, uh, sorry, comparable, ability in the health center? Can you prescribe birth control pills to, to girls?
So yeah, I, I operate under the full, my full license. So as a nurse practitioner, I can write prescriptions for anything. And under my clinic license, I have a clinic license and a controlled substance license with the state of Massachusetts that allows me to, um, treat with medications on site. So I follow all of those rules and regulations.
And is, is there any point at which you have to notify a parent?
So I, I, what I say to students every time they come in for confidential appointment, I start off with confidentiality. And I say those three things, pregnancy, family planning, reproductive health, contraceptive care, STDs. And the only time that I would break confi, and substance abuse counseling, when we, when we break confidentiality is if we're afraid, that we're concerned that a child's going to hurt themselves, hurt someone else. Or what I always say is the Allison Clause. And the Allison Clause is, I see that you're making really destructive decisions that are leading you down a path that is just going to be bad. And so then I need to alert one adult in your life. And I have actually broken confidentiality this year, um, with a student because I was concerned with her substance use. And so, I mean, that's why they come, like, that's the professional piece. So they get that right out the bat before I even ask them any question. So it's very clear to them that they can open up and be honest with me, but that I am also, you know, I'm there for their safety and for their health.
I want to thank you for being able to explain this to all of us. And I also want to thank you for explaining that these are not going to be just distributed, that this comes with counseling. This is part of the counseling.
And once I, and not only the counseling, which I think is really important, is the screening and the testing. So as they come in, they are actually then screened and tested for sexually transmitted diseases and then treated. And I think that the PBD numbers are low, but I wonder if, if I've already had nine positive chlamydias and I've only screened 10% of the population, what would that number be if I could screen more? And condoms are a way that, that will bring kids in that wouldn't normally get tested through their regular doctors.
Thank you.
I know.
Uh, Dr. Levine, then we'll go to Mrs. Kopnder.
Sorry, I was, I'm still confused about your answer. Maybe I just didn't.
That's okay.
So can a student?
Yes.
Come to you for a condom without parental permission at any age?
Um, right now, they can't come to me for a condom for any reason.
No, I know that. But if the school committee votes yes on, on this proposal, will a student be able to come to you for a condom, just for condom distribution at any age without parent permission?
Depending on how the wording is in your decision. If you just say yes to condoms, then I'll say, my interpretation is yes. There are some districts that do put an opt-out clause in. I think that opt-out clauses are all, again, meaning that a parent could write a letter and send it to the health center and say, don't give my kid condoms. I think that that, um, that prevent, that presents more barriers. So professionally, I would say, if we're going to do it, we do it right, and we provide all access.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kopnder?
Thank you. Um, I, I don't think I have much of a question for you, just, just towards the committee. I think this is a good decision. I think it's something that we should do. I think there was a time that I, I think some members of this committee, we had a tough time. We, we talked about this before, and it wasn't easy. Time moves on, things change. But something that really put me over the edge was a couple of weeks ago, this committee voted to put NarCam in our schools. We're going to put NarCam in our schools, but we're not going to give the kids a condom? Seriously? That's what really put me over the edge. So I will definitely be in favor of this. So thank you.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Mr. Harkman.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you for being here today, Ms. Kilcoyne, and thank you to Mr. Rosengold for, um, chairing the committee that is reporting this out. I've had some interesting conversations with parents of high school students, um, recently on this subject. And I'd say the vast majority of them are in favor of condom distribution at the high school through your clinic. I asked them, the same parents that were in favor of condom distribution, if they were in favor of the morning after pill being prescribed through the high school clinic. And they were all opposed to that. But it's my understanding, through the chair, to Ms. Kilcoyne, that that is one of the things that you are capable of prescribing. Is that right? Yeah, so, um...
If I may, just for point of clarification, that's by the state. That's not something that we have purview of.
And, Mr. Rosengold, no, I was going to bring that point out, because it seems to be, um, parents that I've talked to that have concerns about condom distribution at the high school raise valid reasons for it, whether it's abstention, or religious reasons, or, or other reasons. And they're astonished to learn that Ms. Kilcoyne has the authority to... they're astonished to learn that Ms. Kilcoyne has the authority to prescribe a wide array of medication that they would not, if they had known about it, may not have consented to. So in any event, I do think, I do agree with Ms. Carpenter. Although I have some reservations about a legislative body acting in the public school system, acting in this way, I do realize that we are protecting children's health. And the reality is, high school-aged children are, by and large, not all of them, but by and large, engaging in sexual activity. I will note that, just to be, I don't know, for consistency, we haven't asked parents to talk about this issue. We haven't had the Board of Health here to talk about this issue. We haven't had teachers or the principal at the high school here to talk about this issue. We haven't had religious organizations talk about this issue. We haven't had seniors or taxpayers talk about this issue. We haven't had a lot of people talk about this issue. And on top of that, we don't even have a policy in front of us about who's going to be able to opt out or not opt out, or things like that. And I just bring that up because it's been hammered quite a bit tonight and quite a bit over the last several, maybe years. But anyway, thank you.
Mr. Hockman.
I have another two.
Mr. Hockman. Mr. Rosengold, three points.
Yes, please.
A, they were all, besides religious groups, everybody else was consulted. B, this was discussed in a subcommittee that you were unable to attend, which is valid. But this is not a topic that has not been brought up by us with the principal, with the superintendent, with the assistant superintendent. So I just want that to be clear. This isn't coming out of left field. This is something that we talked about when we instituted the health center. So it's been kind of an ongoing topic. And at that time, we were like, "Let's just get this up and running and see if there's a need. See if it's something that we do want to pursue in the future." But it wasn't something that we were ready to partake in at that moment. But everybody else has been consulted. And actually, I formatted a policy that I can bring forward next meeting for your purview. I did forward it to Ms. Murtagh with a couple of changes that I'd like to see made. But I can certainly bring that up at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Rosengold. And really, I mean, there's so many important issues that we deal with. And one thing about this board is, and I can say this with full confidence, is that we all do our due diligence. And, you know, every topic we discuss, I know it's discussed with other people. And certainly, we do our homework. And, you know, I mean, these two issues in particular that we've dealt with tonight and debated quite a bit, I've talked to more people about these two issues than probably as much as any other topic we've discussed. And I know all of us have done that. So, you know, these are important decisions. And I know that committee has spent a lot of time working on this and has got input from a lot of people and everything. So, you know, I'm certainly comfortable moving forward with the decision today and a vote today, if that's the will of the board. Any other comments? Oh, Mr. Amico?
Just one more. I just want to commend Mr. Rosengold for all his efforts and great work that you do with the health center. It's your passion. And I just want to thank you for doing that. And Ms. Kilcoyne, thank you for being the person that our students trust to come to see. And having this condom distribution item available to them and to you is a benefit for the whole city. I really, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. I'm going to follow up on one of the things Mr. Amico said. I do want to thank Mr. Rosengold and his subcommittee. I have the utmost faith in him. I knew this had been properly vetted, researched, discussed, and that the appropriate people had been consulted on this. I had no doubt. And I'm very glad that you did this, to bring it forward, because this is how it's supposed to work. Subcommittees are supposed to work like that. And then the issue comes to the full board. And I also want to tell Allison, Allison's probably laughing because she can probably remember the first time we met. And it was a long time ago when health center was first proposed, many years ago.
2001, 2002?
Yeah, 99 or 2000, yeah.
Yeah, 2000?
And I had a lot of issues with that going forward. And we discussed it back then. Right now, what is different is the laws, some of the laws have changed. There is one law that hasn't changed. And I think at that time, that was what had shocked me the most, was the age at which a child can be considered to be emancipated, which was actually, at that time, it was 11 they could come to you for advice.
There's no age now.
No age now, okay. It shows you not only how the world has changed, but it also speaks to the fact that we have basically a freestanding medical clinic in our high school. And the law allows Ms. Kilcoyne to practice medicine, to prescribe necessary medication for kids. And I'm actually surprised that something that causes no physical harm to a person, but does present a problem for some of us because of religious reasons, there is no harm that will come to someone, but there is great protection that will be provided by your counseling. And when necessary, the distribution of something that someone might need. That's different than years ago, but that difference makes a huge difference in this day and age. And I'm very glad we have that health clinic. And I'm very glad you're watching out for our students. And I'm really glad that you are able to talk to them and be honest with them, and that when necessary, that you do make sure that they're getting parental involvement if needed. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Dr. Levine?
Thank you. Before the school committee votes, could you clarify what it is that you're voting on, so I'll know what it is that we're doing at the health clinic? Is it condom distribution without restriction?
Yes. Mr. Rosengold, did you want to?
Yes, that's the motion.
And secondly, you'll notice that considering my record, I'm withholding my opinion on this issue until you actually vote.
I advised him to say, whatever his position is, say the opposite. He chose to be quiet.
One question, though. The restriction is that counseling goes, the student has to receive counseling.
In the context of a one-on-one visit, that would be the only, and every time they present, to have that education in that one-on-one visit. I wouldn't do it any other way.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, I believe, is made by Mr. Rosengold, seconded by Mr. Amico. No further comment. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Allison. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosengold. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, just for practical purposes?
You got the vote already.
Like, can I tomorrow when I go to school? Because, just for practical purposes, are we doing a procedure? Are we waiting for a policy?
I would make it effective immediately.
Effective immediately.
And if I may, I tell you what I'll do. I have a policy. I will send that to every board member if you're okay with that. And we can move forward with the policy that Ms. Kilcoyne had sent me.
Okay. And then I'll wait for someone to tell me today?
Yep. So should we wait for our next meeting so that we can vote on that policy?
Speak on that?
Yeah, if I may, I have, and I don't think, I don't think any member here has any qualms with Mr. Rosengold and the policy that he's going to put forward. I think we've discussed the subject and we're all in favor of it. I think what we do need to do procedurally is suspend our rules so that we can waive three readings, or two readings, in order for the policy to become effective. Because our procedure is for the reading, the policy to become effective. So I'm happy to second your motion to waive our procedure.
Motion to waive the procedure and adopt the policy as written. Effective tomorrow.
Second.
You heard the motion by Mr. Rosengold, seconded by Mr. Hockman. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
I'm really sorry because I know this is necessary. So I don't have a problem with it starting immediately and that our policy will follow. But waiving the second readings on policy has gotten us into a problem. And I don't want to see that happen again. And I would just like to say that because you are allowed to do this by state law, that a policy is really just going to be basically a policy statement in this case. And so I don't want to hold up your treatment of students, but I also would like to follow our rules once in a while on policy.
If I may, on that point, well, most school committees, what they'll do is they'll say they allow it and then have the health center set up procedures. So we can...
Yeah, I'll have my own agency.
Exactly. So we can just enact and not even have a policy. We can literally just give her the directive per state guidelines that she's allowed to distribute condoms as she sees fit, because she's following her medical license. Yeah, we don't have to really kind of belabor this point, to be perfectly honest with you, because it falls under her procedural.
Sorry. We've already, we've already put into place that we support the health clinic and that it operates in conformity with our decisions. I honestly don't think we need a policy on this, to be honest.
I'm good with that.
So yes? I mean, do we want to make a vote on it? Mr. Amico, did you?
Do you want to make a motion on that, so we can second and...
We do have a motion on the floor right now. That was made by Mr. Rosengold, seconded by Mr. Hockman, to...
To eliminate a second reading. But I mean, the policy can just simply state, we allow the condom distribution at the health center per her procedures.
Dr. Levine, did you want to jump in?
Just to clarify, I think that if you withdrew that, the vote that you took will stand on its own. It's a vote to give permission. That's all, there is no policy. You don't even have a policy in front of you. So you gave, it's a vote to give permission for Allison to proceed. And just leave it at that.
As long as I want to make sure that I'm following your...
Yeah. You have a vote to move forward, to distribute condoms without restriction by this, effective immediately by this school committee, period.
Great. Yes. Oh, yeah.
Was the motion withdrawn?
I'll remove, yep, withdrawn.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to...
Actually...
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Might as well wrap up the rest of my discussion that night. So under athletics, a couple of things that we're looking forward to move forward with, this will be extremely brief, and there is not, there will not be any motions. We're looking, we're looking for Mr. Sheridan to come before the athletic subcommittee and discuss how he evaluates coaches, why the boys and girls play on the same night. You know, we're trying to encourage school spirit. And it would be nice if they were on different nights so that the boys could attend the girls' games and so forth. And I'm sure that's a scheduling issue. But anyway, we're asking Mr. Sheridan to come before us just to answer a number of questions. The other person that we're looking for to come before the athletic subcommittee is the fire chief. And the reason for that is probably about nine, 10 years ago, they took away the bleachers on the opposite side of the field closest to the high school. And the reason why they were taken down is the police chief at that time said that they had to be removed so that a fire engine could have access from one point of the stadium through to the other. Now that we have that area all paved, I'm wondering if we can establish bleachers on that side of the field again, but still be in the rules that the police, the fire chief at the time had made. So those are the things that we're looking at going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosengold. We'll go back to the agenda item for the superintendent's very quick report. Superintendent?
Dr. Charette, do you have anything to alert the school committee to?
I have a half-hour report for the committee. No, very, relatively quickly. You have in your packet a hiring status report. And quite frankly, we are fully employed at this point. We have two crossing guard positions that still need to be filled. But other than that, all certified and non-certified positions are filled, which may lead you to wonder what we're doing in HR. But we're actually doing a lot of things right now, which, and I'm just going to bring it to your attention, some of the things that are happening. This is the time of year where you sort of turn the focus from this year onto next year. So we're at the point now of reassessing, or actually assessing what our needs will be for next year, and begin thinking about recruiting for staff for the upcoming school year. We've also been looking at developing new protocols for evaluating our non-certified staff in the district. And we've been, when I say "we," by the way, I don't mean myself and Barbara McCarthy, although it'd be a sin to not emphasize the terrific work that she does in HR. But when I say "we," I'm really talking about working with the central office team and the leadership team, and, you know, lots of folks within the district as the ideas come forward, and bringing those folks together and getting this done. We're also working on, and it's been an ongoing process of just assessing, refining operational processes, procedures, and protocols within the HR department. And also, after this, I'm ready to work for the police department because we've been chasing people for fingerprints and queries and all that sort of stuff. So there's a lot of things that are going on within the HR world in the school department. And we'll keep you up to date on that as we move forward. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Charette.
Thank you, Dr. Charette. And thank you for, once again, for bringing our human resources department into some sort of order this year. We thank you for everything that you've tackled and the great job that you've done. I appreciate it very much. I ask the school committee to accept donation from the Cummings Properties on behalf of one of their employees, Michael Bolitiero, who is an employee of Cummings Properties. And under their program, employee-directed giving, Mr. Bolitiero, who lives at Buxton Street in Peabody, in his name, they have given a $1,000 donation to be used for Peabody's Boys Soccer.
Motion to receive with gratitude and request that the superintendent send a letter to the donor.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rosengold. All in favor? It's a vote?
I just wanted to bring your attention to the Young Entrepreneurs Academy that is run by our own Peabody, by Deanne Healy and the Peabody, what is it, the Peabody Chamber of Commerce. We have six kids who are recognized as entrepreneurs by this group. And I'm going to invite them and Deanne and some of the other people that were involved in this young entrepreneurs group to the next school committee meeting. I would like you to meet them, so that you can recognize them as well. There is one particular young person who actually went on to New York to be recognized there for her work as a young entrepreneur. So I think it would be appropriate to bring them forward to the next school committee meeting, so you could meet them for their work. And the paperwork is here for you to look at, so that you could get familiar with the program. I would like to congratulate our high school junior, Ashley Royer, who has had a coming out of sorts for her book, Remember to Forget. She's been involved in a couple of book signings. And I want to congratulate her and her family for that wonderful achievement. And I think with that, I am done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Levine.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more recognition. Partners in Excellence Award, celebration by Mass Insight Education, recognized on April 5th, three of our teachers, Richard Gill from Peabody Veterans Memorial High School, Michael Porcello from Peabody Veterans Memorial High School, and Brooke Wilmot from Peabody Veterans Memorial High School, all AP stats teachers. They received very nice recognition and award from Mass Insight as outstanding AP teachers. And we thank them for the work that they do with our students and congratulate them. I have a few of these books. I'll pass them around. They're on the back pages, our folks.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Levine. Now, we have, we do have one written communication. It's a letter to the Peabody City Council. It's a letter to the Peabody City Council and State Representative Spiliotis and Walsh and Senator Lovely from the school committee. And we'll go to subcommittee reports.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. On the, just so that the members know, those letters are, you know, from the past, but the proposed meeting with the city council, Subcommittee on Liaison, could not take place this evening because we moved this meeting. So a new date's going to be selected.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. We'll go now to subcommittee reports. First one, education. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to be meeting on April 28th at 5:15 PM at the Higgins Middle School in the principal's office, principal's conference room.
Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Carpenter?
We are still in active negotiations with several units right now. Thank you.
Thank you. School safety, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. The school safety committee met on March 28th. Members in attendance were Mr. Rosignol and I. We were discussing, discussing the procedure of parent notification in regards to lockdowns. Mr. Rosignol and I could not agree. We're going to have to have another meeting. But we did agree on having another meeting and calling quite a few people in to help us agree. So, we couldn't agree. So, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Levine, I'm going to be sending you an email to set up a meeting. The two of you will be requested at that meeting as well as the police chief. So I'm hoping to set that up soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The quality and standard subcommittee meeting would have taken place this evening as well, but we had to have a regular school committee meeting, so I need to reschedule that. Just so folks know, there will be a big review on some proposed policies that have come through from MASC. And that will be to update our policy manual. So we will be going over those, the subcommittee will, will be going over those and then bringing them forward for the full committee to determine whether we should include them or not, their, their routine. So they, they just need to be reviewed by the subcommittee first.
Thank you. Liaison to city council and advisory boards, Mrs. Dunn?
The city council, as you, as you heard, I'm in email contact now with the, with the city council through Tim Spanos to reschedule that liaison meeting. The advisory board meeting for the parent advisory board, April 25th. It's Monday night and our featured speaker, featured speaker will be Dr. Levine.
Great, thank you very much, Mrs. Dunn. Building in grounds, nothing to report, but we will be scheduling an upcoming meeting to continue discussion about the future of the Kylie. And new business, we do not have any today. Items for next agenda, I ask, we handle in the regular course of business. Thank you for excellent meeting. We got two issues, Mr. Miko, then Dr. Levine, or Dr. Levine, then Mr. Miko.
I just want, I just want it noted for the record that I agreed with the school committee vote on condoms.
Motion to reconsider?
Mr. Miko?
Through the chair to the whole committee. I'd like to take a minute to recognize and thank Carla McGrath and a whole host of volunteers who put together a very successful spaghetti dinner fundraiser for the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School class of 2016 last Saturday evening over at the Turgian Senior Center. Carla and her group cooked and served delicious Italian meals to over 300 guests. There was a silent auction, a live auction, and they raised lots of money for senior activities raise lots of money for the senior class, I should say. So thanks again to Carla and her friends for a job well done. Thank you. It's late, sorry.
Great, thank you very much. Mrs. Carpenter?
I know it's late, but I just want to remind everybody, it's going to get later. We have an executive session scheduled for negotiation updates. So I just wanted to remind everybody, and I don't have to make a motion for it because it was posted, so we won't be returning.
Very good, Ms. Motion that we are going into executive session with the intent not to return.
Second.
Thank you, everyone, for a good meeting.